Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 7th meeting of the Ann Arbor City Council. If you're able, please rise and join us for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to flag the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would our clerk please call the role of council?
Councilmember Reddish?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Harrison?
Here.
Councilmember Watson?
Here.
Councilmember Malick?
Here.
Councilmember Radina?
Here.
Councilmember Goseyedla?
Here.
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Iyer?
Here.
Councilmember Ackman?
Here.
Councilmember Briggs?
Here.
Councilmember Cornell?
Here.
We have a motion, please, to approve the agenda. Move by, Councilmember Iyer, second by Councilmember Cornell, discussion of the agenda. All in favor, all opposed, the agenda is approved. Do we have communications today from our city administrator?
No, Mayor.
In the absence of introductions, we move directly into public comment reserve time. Public comment reserve time is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council and the community about matters of municipal interest. To speak at public comment reserve time, one needs to have signed up in advance by contacting our city clerk. Speakers in all instances will have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time. Our clerk or the time clock will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time has expired. When your time has expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Our first speaker today is Ken Garber.
Thanks very much, Mayor Taylor. Ken Garber's second words, nice to be with you tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I want to, I'm here tonight to call your attention to agenda item CA 9, Resolution to Approve Bylaws of the Sustainability Commission. The new Sustainability Commission replaces environmental and energy commissions. Both those discontinued commissions set aside time for public comment at two points in their meetings before and after regular business. If you refer to Section 8.2 of the new Sustainability Commission bylaws in your packet tonight, you'll see that it specifies only a single public comment period. The Environmental Commission has, and both those commissions actually have had two comment, public comment periods in their bylaws for at least 15 years, according to Legistar. And I think the commissions have generally found the, the extra public comment, I wouldn't call it extra, the standard public comment, helpful. I'm not aware that dual slots have ever been a problem. I personally have many times appreciated the opportunity to thank energy commissioners and to respectfully offer suggestions and ideas for the future, and others have too. Wayne Appleyard has been another frequent speaker at the end of Energy Commission meetings. I think councilmembers Briggs and Radina can, can attest to all this. I think it's been a good dialogue. So, you know, I haven't compared the, the Energy and Environmental Commission bylaws side by side with the new Sustainability Commission bylaws, but they seem to track very closely. This seems to be the one significant change, so I don't know why this was done, but you can easily correct this by pulling CA 9 from the consent agenda and amending Section 8.2 of the bylaws to introduce a second public comment period after regular business. I emailed my councilmembers about this this week, so I thank you for considering this tonight. And finally, I want to thank all of you for your public service, for your hard work on council. I know we don't always agree, but I really respect the job that you do and the enormous amount of time that you've committed to it. So, thank you again, and hope you have a good meeting.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathy Griswold.
Good evening. I want to thank Ken Garber for his statements. I agree with everything. I'm here tonight to talk about CA 3, to hire yet another consultant. It's really easy to hire consultants. I was in the business world, and it was easy to hire consultants, and it was easy to get the answer that you wanted from your consultant. But what we have is a critical, critical crisis tonight, and we've had it for some time. We are not spending money on pedestrian and cycling infrastructure in a meaningful way, and we're not spending it because we're not even measuring it. There's a phrase in education, what gets measured gets accomplished. We don't measure our crime downtown because it doesn't exist to the people in this room, the policymakers. We don't measure the lack of street lighting, mean time between failure. The only report that I see is the number of streetlights that DTE has repaired year to date. Maybe you don't understand and realize, DTE only owns two-thirds of the streetlights in this city. The city owns the other one-third, but I guess we don't need to know how they're functioning. We are facing a very, very difficult time. Anyone who hasn't read the New York Times in the last couple weeks probably needs to. We've had it pretty easy in Ann Arbor. We could spend money on whatever we wanted and do whatever we wanted and not get along with each other and treat each other in any way that we chose to, just like middle school. We don't have the luxury of doing that anymore. These are very, very difficult times. I had someone doing yard work for me today, and he said, and he doesn't have a criminal record at all, but he said, "Does Trump realize what he is doing? The crime rate is going to go up." Now, if that's obvious to someone doing yard work, who I don't think graduated from high school, it definitely should be obvious to us, and what are we doing to prepare our downtown environment for the increasing crime rate if we're simply ignoring the problem that we have right now? Lastly, I'd like to read a quote from Ken Burns. "The best arguments in the world won't change a single person's point of view," he said. "The only thing that can do that is a good story. Good stories are a kind of benevolent Trojan horse. You let them in, and they add complication, allowing you to understand that sometimes a thing and its opposite are true at the same time." This is in the New York Times. I, I hope you'll take a look at it and think about it, because too often we've been divisive, we've been binary in our thinking, and it's time that we work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tom Stalberg.
Mayor, this caller is joining us on Zoom. Caller with the phone number ending in 534. Go ahead.
Good evening. This is Tom Stalberg, calling from Lower Town in Ann Arbor. I'm calling you to ask you to vote no on DC 1. First, I'd like to read the Environmental Commission's land heritage statement. I acknowledge that the land the city of Ann Arbor occupies is the ancestral, traditional, and contemporary lands of the indigenous Abig, including Adawa, Ojibwe, and Botoon Mi'kmaq, and Wai'endak peoples. I further acknowledge that our city stands, like almost all property in the United States, on lands obtained, generally in unconscionable ways, from indigenous peoples. The taking of this land was formalized by the Treaty of Detroit in 1807. Knowing where we live, work, study, and recreate does not change the past, but a thorough understanding of the ongoing consequences of this past can empower us in our work to create a future that supports human flourishing and justice for all individuals. The Environmental Commission is no more. Also, the comprehensive plan acknowledges the historical and systemic racism in land use and lending policies. That discrimination denies certain groups of people the opportunity for intergenerational equity building. But our plan, our comprehensive plan, doesn't offer anything to rectify that last, lost opportunity, that lost intergenerational equity building. So I ask you to contemplate our city's progressive statements in the context of our actual policies and actions. Tonight, you're being asked to bail out a large local property owner and large residential and commercial landlord because he can't make his project pencil out for enough money for himself. I recall several years ago when our mayor and his council majority at that time inappropriately helped a developer avoid nine to three units of affordable housing, or $9 million to the Affordable Housing Fund, so that developer could pencil out. Well, that developer came to market at double the rent that he said he would. We don't know what's going to happen here on this one. If we really want to accomplish sustainability, affordability, and equity, our actions must match our words.
30 seconds.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kitty Khan.
Mayor, this caller will be joining us on Zoom. Go ahead.
Hello, this is Kitty Khan, fifth ward. I'm calling in to call out the blatant hypocrisy and pay-to-play about the city helping one of the mayor's biggest donors to build three parking structures for his Arbor South project. First of all, the mayor and city council have eliminated parking minimums for new developments, and the DTC 1 zoning district is for developing on transit lines so that cars and parking would be significantly less necessary. So, I was shocked when I heard that the city will help pay for three parking structures for a TC 1 development. But then I realized the developer is Jeff Hoffman, one of the mayor's buddies and one of his biggest donors. Is this a coincidence? Would this same assistance be given to anyone else? Has anything like this ever been done before?
No.
I think the answer to all of those questions is no. I'll probably be accused of being a conspiracy theorist, but just look at the facts. This is outrageous. Please vote no on DC 1.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Hannah Stanton-Gokel.
Hi, City Council. My name is Hannah Stanton-Gokel. I'm a graduate student at the University of Michigan, and I live in an affordable housing co-op. I am also a full-time bike, bus, and walk commuter, and I rode here today with 12 other very brave souls through rush hour traffic with bubble machines attached to our bikes in order to draw visibility and attention to transportation safety on our roads. So today, we flooded East Stadium Boulevard traffic with bubbles before turning onto Main Street and arriving here at City Hall. I call this protest bike ride "Bubbles for Bike Lanes." You can think of it as like a whimsical protest bike ride. It's really fun. After the meeting, please check your inbox for an email of a video compilation of all the close passes I have experienced just on Stadium Boulevard while doing these protest bike rides. I film every ride. The point of this protest bike ride today is to come here and to ask you to please allocate $500,000 you have set aside in the budget to do an immediate protected bike lane quick build on East Stadium, excuse me, and to road diet that road so that it can be made safer for all people who are transporting themselves through that road. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alex Lo.
This is nobody, which is what I was labeled at last week's planning commission due to the fact that I would, in fact, like to live in a skyscraper. Tonight, I'd like to talk to you about both the comprehensive plan and safety. Now, Stanton-Gokel has already spoken brilliantly on safety, so I feel only the need to echo and amplify what she said. Safety cannot wait. On the topic of the comprehensive plan, I'd like to address the latest volley of misinformation about it, and hope some council members will speak up about it, too. The latest round of abject tripe is about how the city is supposedly gearing up to sell parkland due to the fact that a map showing access to community parks excludes both cemeteries and golf courses. It's perfectly reasonable to exclude golf courses and cemeteries from this list, given that they are not places appropriate for general recreation. If any fellow golfers in the audience disagree with me on that, I would encourage them to consider their impotent rage that they would feel if, if they saw someone walking their dog on the fairway. Leaving aside the massive environmental damage from our golf courses, even our supposedly environmentally friendly ones, their limited utility makes them as inappropriate for the label "community park" as this very building. More interesting to me, though, is the fact that this very group's website correctly does label the library lot as not being a park and never having been so, and it includes Liberty Plaza. I'm glad to see that even they are not deluded enough to, to call this desolate parking lot a park. After all, is this a park? A quick final note on DC 1, we really don't need more parking. If you absolutely must do something like this, please tie any bonds for, for parking to a proper commitment for, for creating a real pedestrian-friendly streetscape, which the current plan does not appear to include at all. While I encourage you to respond appropriately to misinformation and conspiracy theories, I do, I do urge you to, to listen to, to people who are opposed to, to this for serious reasons rather than conspiracy theories. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shannon Lau.
Hello, everyone. Shannon Lau. None of you, I live in none of your wards. I live in Pittsview Township, so I guess politically you have no reason to listen to me, but I hope by the end of this that maybe you feel that my voice matters in the conversation of how we designate our land and use it. So, to get from my home and into the city, to be here today before you, it took 40 minutes to bike here, and on days when my body's not able, the weather's not permitting, or I just cannot muster up the courage to bike up car-heavy Packard, it's a 45-minute bus commute, and I do this commute almost daily. I live far from town, outside of city limits, and in a single-family home, and it's not because I need or want the space or the backyard, or even want isolation, but it's because of the deep scarcity of homes in this city, besides the Bigfoot mansions and luxury apartments that are unaffordable. And I know this gap is not by coincidence, but by design, when I see beautiful homes like those in Carytown that can accommodate multiple units inside them. And it's wild to me that these dwellings, while they look so similar to many of the single-family homes in Ann Arbor, are illegal to build in those very same neighborhoods, just because of its ability to support multiple families. I care about building more housing because all of us deserve to walk to our favorite grocery stores, libraries, parks, and coffee shops, to feel safer in the streetscape, and be surrounded by neighbors who push us to be our best selves through proximity, conversation, and gathering. We need to build housing and design our city to support this. But perhaps I'm just a young idealist, and these aren't things I should be spending my time fighting for. Then surely, at the very least, may we all do our part in fighting this climate crisis. May we be stewards of this land, welcome our neighbors in, and support them with a housing abundance. May we remember that there were people before us who lived here who were pushed out and to whom we have the obligation of fixing those wrongs. I believe the comprehensive land use plan is a blueprint for how we should build our city. And councilmembers, I'm urging you to back this plan and fight for more housing, walkability, and a dignified life for all who want to live here. This plan is how we live out our values of sustainability, affordability, and inclusion, and this is how we show up as good neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Patricia Austin.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, City Council members. I'm currently serving as president of the Ann Arbor Historical Foundation, and I'm here with some really exciting news. It's sort of a finish to the bicentennial, but we undertook a project, and we want to share what we have accomplished so that you will all know about the history, in case you're ever on jeopardy and questioned. In May of 1824, John Allen and Eliza Walker-Rumsey registered the name Ann Arbor at the land office in Detroit. In an 1850s story in Godey's Lady Book Magazine, a well-known magazine of that era, an article featured a romanticized version of the naming of the city. It showed two women sitting in a grape arbor visiting supposedly Ann Allen and Mary Ann Rumsey. At the city's centennial in 1924, a group of citizens presented the city a bronze plaque with the two Ann's sitting in an arbor. Based on that magazine article, the apocryphal legend began. For reasons unknown to me, the late professor Russell Bidlack of the University Department of Library Science began to research the naming of Ann Arbor in 1962, including visiting with Ann Allen's descendants in Stanton, Virginia, whom many of you perhaps know, when John Allen, her husband, headed for California, her family came and took her back to Virginia. He found that the wives of Mr. Allen and Mr. Rumsey had yet to arrive when the city was named, and certainly were not sitting in a grape arbor. We acknowledge that the Ann was for the wives, and the Arbor, spelled A-R-B-O-U-R, was later changed to Ann Arbor, A-R-B-O-R. And the Arbor referred to a grove of oak trees which formed natural corridors. When it was announced that the city of Ann Arbor would be celebrating its bicentennial in 2024, Patricia Austin, Grace Shackman, and Susan Weinberg decided to undertake a project to correct the misinformation of how our beloved city was named. We contacted Jeffrey Crockett, who chaired the Bicentennial History Subcommittee, and we worked with that committee under his leadership. Our thanks also to Christine Crockett, at that time president of the foundation and its board, who donated $3,000 to play for the, pay for this new plaque. So, thank you, Jeff and Christine. A new bronze plaque was designed and placed on the large stone with the 1924 plaque. It is located next to the Live Building on the corner of Huron and First Streets, facing Huron, and it does tell the story of how Ann Arbor was named. So, my friends, we hope it will set the record straight, and now you know the rest of the story. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Peter Eckstein.
I am not here opposing Jeffrey Haltman's Arbor South project. Yes, it would be a highly car-centric space that would cynically exploit the zoning advantages he gained by persuading you to he gained by persuading you to pass TC-1. But if he were willing to risk his own money and credit for the whole project, I would not protest. What I am opposing is its potentially massive taxpayer subsidy. With interest, the liability to the city of financing Jeffrey's three parking decks would be $146 million. That's one-seventh of a billion dollars. Your own consultant mourns that if the revenue is not sufficient to cover the debt service, the city's general fund represents the source of payment for the shortfall. That's us, the taxpayers. Parking decks could lose money if residents own fewer cars because they walk, bike, carpool, take Ubers, or even ride the bus. The decks could also fall short if housing occupancy in the project falls short. A project bordered by two busy roads may be unattractive to families with children. The demand for housing is not infinite, and new projects are going up every month. Also, Trump may cripple the local economy, so there is lots of risk, and the risk would fall on us. Some of you argue that a great value of all of our new housing is what it adds to the city's coffers. But as far as I can tell, this project will not pay a nickel over the next 30 years to city government, county government, or the transit authority. I cannot think of a legitimate reason why taxpayers should risk a good part of $146 million for a project that will yield so little tax revenue for so long. In an article about this project, MLive notes that, this is not my words, that Jeffrey has been a major campaign donor to the mayor and some of his council allies. This may cause some to imagine that there's an illegitimate reason for adopting this. To paraphrase the old song, whatever Jeffrey wants, Jeffrey gets.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Hans.
Mayor, this caller will be turning his phone to the... Caller with the phone number ending in 804. Press star six to unmute your phone. Go ahead. Caller, phone number ending in 804. Caller, phone number 804. Press star six to unmute your phone. Here are the caller's phones. Appears to be unmuted, but we're not hearing them. It appears the caller is now hung up.
Perhaps let's roll with our next speaker, and if the person calls back in, we'll pick them up on the flip side, that is to say after Mr. Haley. Our next speaker is Mr. Haley.
Good evening, everyone, and to the young man that spoke from Pittsfield Township. You have the right to speak at any meeting that you want, so thumbs up. Jeremy Haley, Pittsfield Township, if I didn't already say it. Property taxes. One of the reasons people lose their homes in the first few years is property taxes. I don't know if you know. And I was made aware that when I bought my house in 2024, that something's going to happen next year. And yeah, like they said, it did happen. My house payment went up $200 when I got the notice of why. It was the adjustment in the property taxes between who owned the house before and when I bought it. So paying an extra $2,400 a year for that one. When UVM buys property and they take it off the tax book, where does that property income, property go? Just asking. NGO, when they buy property, same thing. Where does that income from that property go after they take control over it? It goes somewhere. But what I'm here to talk to and make you guys aware of what's going on in Texas right now and has to do is the 16th Amendment and direct taxes and stuff, and the reason why it's important to property taxes is, is you guys probably realize what an unrealized gain is, where you buy a stock at one price, it goes up, and the value of the price of that stock is now more. Until you cash it, that gain is not realized until you cash it, until that point is unrealized. There's an attorney and real estate developer in Texas who is suing the county in Texas, Denton County, over property taxes and this unrealized gain tax. It already made it through the district court. They kicked the can to the appellate court, and now it's going to the Texas Supreme Court. Next place it's going to go is to the US Supreme Court, where they're going to have to come up with what a unrealized gain is. And if you go to his site and read Mockingbird, properties.com/DCAD, you'll see all the information. He has a 30-page amicus brief and a 45-page criminal complaint against Denton County, Texas. It talks about how the Uniform Appraising Commission was quantifying appraisals to meet certain standards and how that was affecting bonds and issuing bonds in schools in that district and all that fun stuff. So I'm letting you know that's out there. It's in the works of the Texas State Supreme Court. The next place it's going to go is to the US Supreme Court and where we go on property taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there communications today from council? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for asking. Has a person come back? Thank you, council member. Our next speaker is Mark Hans.
Caller with the phone number ending in 804. Press star six to unmute your phone. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Can you hear me? All right. Thanks.
You bet.
Sorry. All right. First-time caller, longtime listener. Really appreciate all you guys do. I must say, I don't have the grace of patience to do everything you guys do. My main reason for calling today is a massive frustration with A2C Click Fix. I am a former employee of the city. I was working for the Parks and Recreation Department. I'm very familiar with how those come through, and ever since I left the city, I've seen our requests fall on deaf ears. We often get the canned response of the city has addressed issues as thoroughly as possible. There's nothing more the city can do at the time. It is disingenuous and incredibly frustrating to have a canned response. The least the city employees could do is give us a thorough breakdown of what actions were taken. I am specifically calling about the sidewalks on Green Road east of Nixon. They are very heavily trafficked, especially now that Nixon Road is closed for the summer, and they are not maintained by the city. The other property owners seem to maintain their sidewalk sections just fine, but the section along Sugar Bush in particular, I believe, three years ago, I was the last person to trim the bushes back along Green Road. So I would ask, please, to have someone maintain the heavily trafficked sidewalks. It currently is impossible to pass anyone on the sidewalk, and there's often three, four people wide on this sidewalk. If we're taking pedestrian and cyclist safety seriously, I ask you to do the bare minimum of maintaining our walking and cycling areas and spaces. I submitted the first request three months ago. I've since submitted two more requests, and I've had no feedback from the city. It's just, it's frankly ridiculous, but there's no response. And Secret Fix is incredibly poorly run. It comes off as purely lip service. I'll just end with saying a shout out to Joe Lang and Missy Stoltz. They are city employees, and they are wonderful at what they do, and they give a ton to the city, and I appreciate them deeply. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there communications from council? Councilmember Cornell.
Thank you, and thanks for everyone who came out tonight for public comment. It's always nice to see new faces and folks younger than me engaging in government, so thank you so much for being here. I wanted to address a comment from earlier just to assure residents that we do track crime, including crime downtown. If you go to the Ann Arbor website, the Ann Arbor City website, you click on the Police Department, you can actually do a Clemis Public Crime Search. It pulls incident data every 24 hours from the police record system. And if you really want to get into it, you can subscribe to Crime Alerts and receive updates when new crimes occur near a specific address. So if that is of interest to you, that data is available on the website, and you can get daily updates on that. The other thing I wanted to quickly address is, it wouldn't be a council meeting if I wasn't talking about Main Street. The Rolling Sculpture Car Show is on Friday from 2:00 to 10:00 p.m. This is an annual event. It's been around for a long time. It's free to the public. There are more than 300 antique, classic, and concept cars that will be displayed downtown, and it's a great way to come and enjoy everything that Main Street and our hospitality and retail businesses down there have to offer. I'm sure it appeals to someone like my husband, and maybe not me, but I promise you, even if you're not a car person, you're going to have a nice time Friday night downtown. So I hope that you will join us.
Councilmember Dish.
Thank you, and thank you for that warm invitation to the downtown. I wanted to announce on behalf of Councilmember Cynthia Harrison and myself that we are having a coffee hour on Wednesday, July 3, at the Ann Arbor District Library in the lower-level program room from 6:00 to 7:30. And our special guest will be Police Chief Andre Anderson. So please come. 23rd, yep, July 23, Wednesday. And I also wanted to say that I've been canvassing Board One these past weeks, and I want to thank everyone who has taken the time to talk to me. Canvassing is always inspiring, and I leave feeling uplifted every time I score an open door and a conversation. So please keep opening your doors. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. On July 6, 2023, Ann Arbor City Council passed the Driving Equality Ordinance. It was nine years ago on that very same date that Philando Castile was killed by police during a traffic stop that never should have occurred. His death is a reminder that routine should never become fatal. In the two years since the ordinance passed, we've seen what's possible when we stop using minor violations as a gateway to disproportionately stopping black drivers and start asking harder questions about what safety really means. I want to acknowledge Chief Anderson for following up to the ordinance by issuing a policy update that closed a loophole around stop documentation. That move helped to reinforce what the ordinance was about: harm reduction, transparency, and accountability. This has shown us what's possible when departments participate in harm reduction as a practice. It's shown us something else, too, where the cracks are, because passing the ordinance also revealed the limits of our existing databases and data collection methods. It exposed how some of our systems weren't built for this kind of equity work and how much more we have to do to modernize the way we track, analyze, and respond to traffic stop data. Progress isn't just about passing a law. It's the implementation, the follow-through, and the course corrections. And we're seeing that in real time, but we're also seeing where we're falling short, and that's part of the process, too. So today, I want to thank my fellow council members, the mayor, the Ann Arbor Police Department, and ICPOC, and the community for supporting the implementation and evolution of the Driving Equality Ordinance. Thank you.
Councilmember Adina.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to start by thanking everybody who came out, everybody in the community who came out to the Ann Arbor JC's Fourth of July celebration. It was a great time, but I especially just wanted to thank our fire department for once again putting on the spray park after the parade. I know it's generally a pretty hot day, and that's a great way to cool down. I know I saw the mayor running through with some kids and enjoying it, so it's, I think, just a great community celebration. I also wanted to, in continuing our council partnership with the Ann Arbor District Library's Summer Game, I wanted to share this week's Summer Game code, which is A2 Comp Plan. You'll notice throughout the series here that all of these projects will be, or all of these codes will be bringing attention to either activities or issues that are relevant this summer throughout the city, and so I hope that you'll continue to participate and play. And on the topic of the library, I will also note that I know many residents have started to receive ballots at home to participate in the August 5 election. We have two ballot proposals that would empower the library to be able to build a new state-of-the-art library in our downtown, and so I continue to encourage folks to educate themselves on that. I personally will be supporting both proposals A and B and just encourage folks to vote.
Councilmember Briggs.
Thank you. In less joyful news, I wanted to just draw our attention to an element of the big ugly bill that passed last week. I know there's been a lot of conversation around that, but the impacts to us locally in terms of what it might mean for folks who have housing vouchers is we're anticipating about a cut of about 900 vouchers locally from the Ann Arbor Housing Commission, is my understanding. It's a 43% cut to the voucher program by the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. That equates to a $12 million loss for the Ann Arbor Housing Commission, Jennifer Hall reported last week. So I'd like to thank our housing providers for working hard, trying to figure out how we cover this incredible loss to our community and keep our vulnerable populations housed as we move forward.
Further communication from council. I would like to request the, recommend for the following nominations for your consideration to the Economic Development Corporation Board, Robin Hall; Brian Chambers; to the Transportation Commission, Lauren Dunlap. Further, I'd like to request confirmation of the following appointment that was presented to City Council to June 16, 2025 regular session; to the Economic Development Board Corporation, Teresa Nichols. May I have a motion, please? Move by. Councilmember Cornell seconded by Councilmember Ayer. Discussion. All in favor? All opposed? It's approved. I will observe that, is CC-1? Perhaps, Councilmember Briggs? Is that the...
No, I just got lost.
Oh, my apologies.
We're all dead.
All right. Yep. Now, observe two, MC3 Resolution to reappoint Michelle Marusi to the Local Development Finance Authority Board, which will be up for consideration at our next meeting. We have before us a consent agenda. May I have a motion, please? Do it. Oh, is the, is CC-1 for consideration today, or is that for consideration? Is that... CC-1 is up, sorry, my apologies. CC-1, which is a resolution to reappoint Jessica Francis to the Independent Community Police Oversight Commission, is up for, if you will notice, today. Excellent. Thank you. We have before us a consent agenda. May I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda? Move by. Councilmember Watson seconded by Councilmember Dish. Discussion of the consent agenda. Councilmember Briggs.
Caught back up. So I'd like to pull CA-9 and then just make comments around a few others. CA-3, the North Main Street transportation study, really thankful to staff for being proactive on this. This is not only a transportation planning, but it'll result in engineering and planning services so that we can understand how to basically redesign the street so with safety in mind and increase mobility options for all users, improving gateways and improving safety performance. So thanks for staff for being proactive so that when we get to the point of actually redesign... redesigning this roadway, we've got all the information we need. Also, the distribution of these marijuana excise tax rebate dollars couldn't come at a better time in terms of how we're divying them up. $136,000 for eviction prevention, the $565,000 for Rising Hope Housing Program that will also address trauma-informed eviction prevention. So, glad that we've set those amongst many other good work. So, glad we're doing that. And then also, just wanted to draw attention to another horrible Trump cut with the resiliency hubs where we were awarded a $1 million grant, but that was pulled back. But thankful that our Sustainability Department is still committed to moving us forward on developing these resiliency hubs at Green Baxter Court and Peace Neighborhood Center. Obviously, that's, it's always challenging to stretch our dollars thinner. But thanks to the work for, to everyone for doing this.
Councilmember Cornell.
There are a few great things of the Consent Agenda, and I share Councilmember Briggs' enthusiasm for the North Main Street project. I just wanted to call quick attention to CA6, which is a two-year administrative services agreement with the Ann Arbor Ypsilanti Smart Zone, LDFA. This basically allows the city to provide oversight and, especially around finances, to what is a pretty complex grant here in town. And that funding enables a downtown incubator that supports startups. So, basically keeping all of the great ideas that originate from the super smart people in our community and even at the U here in Ann Arbor where they can grow their companies and attract investments and create jobs. It does take city staff to manage that, and I'm grateful for the professionalism and the expertise that they bring to that. And then secondly, CE14, which is a contract to Spark for Economic Development Services to the city to attract and help established businesses grow here. So, on the opposite side of the business growth spectrum, you know, we have the small startups that require, have really distinct, unique needs. And then on the opposite end, established businesses which, you know, have needs that are different from the startups and the smaller businesses. And so, Spark does a great job of attracting jobs here, which in turn creates investment in our community and jobs in our community. For instance, Sartorius, located here in the city of Ann Arbor, has invested $100 million in the city in a facility there. And that's really incredible and it's a huge benefit. So, it feels like a small investment for a really great return.
Councilmember Adina.
Thank you. Just briefly on CA9, the resolution to approve bylaws for the Sustainability Commission.
That's been pulled.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Councilmember Watson.
I'd just like to comment briefly on CA7 and CA8. I'm so glad that in spite of an EPA grant being terminated, the city is following through on its commitment to fund resilience work at Green Baxter Court Community Center and Peace Neighborhood Center, two crucial community centers that provide services to our youth, low-income residents, and marginalized communities. OSI's decision to fund resilience hubs, including solar energy and backup power storage, will help maintain power and service preventions at these community centers during severe weather events and power outages. It's a full-circle moment for me because in high school, I was a tutor and summer program counselor at Green Baxter Court. I learned the value of service at Green Baxter. And growing up black in Ann Arbor, it was an empowering experience to volunteer in a community where the majority of residents looked like me. I was back at the community center last August when EPA officials came to award the city a grant for this resilience work, including presenting us with a paper check for $1 million. I'm glad that the city can maintain its commitment to Green Baxter Court in Ward II, and I'm holding out hope that the leadership at EPA will come to its sentences and honor the commitment it made in the form of that grant.
Councilmember Harrison.
I just want to comment on CA5 and the funding that went to each, to, you know, housing, to housing and also the Rising Hope for Housing Program. People who are impacted by the criminal legal system, even those who hold a voucher, still face doors closed in their face. This funding helps with basics: rent, utilities, diapers, food, a ride to a job interview or a school meeting or a doctor's appointment, whatever it takes to help someone stay housed and stay stable. This is really long-term work, and it happens through voluntary, trauma-informed case management that sees people as people and not for the worst thing that they did. This is what real community investment can look like when we're serious about repairing harm from past policies. I'm proud, I was proud to lead that budget amendment, and I'm proud that we, I'm really thankful to my peers for supporting it, and I'm very proud that we're moving these funds where they belong. And that's into the hands of those working to stay afloat and to move forward in their lives. I also want to thank the community organizations that are doing this work every day. Your commitment to this population makes this possible. Thank you.
Further discussion of the Consent Agenda. All in favor of the Consent Agenda with the exception of CA9? All opposed? The Consent Agenda with the exception of CA9 is approved with 11 council members present, all voting the affirmative, thus satisfying the eight-vote requirement with respect to CA10, CA11, CA12. CA9, Resolution to approve bylaws of the Sustainability Commission, moved by Councilmember Briggs, seconded by Councilmember Cornell. Discussion, please, of CA9. Councilmember Briggs.
Yeah, I wanted to thank Mr. Garber for bringing up the issue around the bylaws that he did. For folks who know who've served on commissions with me, I often make this, suggest this change myself when I'm in those commissions. So, I actually, if Ms. Maudry could pass, share around a proposed amendment, I'd like Folks have received that, and then I will explain it. It's for CA9. Great. So, I'd like to propose just a couple of small edits. This is something that, despite the fact that I had eyes on this, I just didn't pick up on the fact that we had this in there. I think it's somewhat standard in terms of our general bylaws. I'm proposing amendment to 7.12 to increase the speaking time period from two minutes to three minutes, and then in 8.2 to add in a second public comment period at the end of the meeting, following communications and before adjournment.
Second, seconded by Councilmember Cornell, Councilmember Briggs.
Yeah. And so, you know, I think that this is fairly good practice to have public comment both at beginning and end. It allows folks, just as Mr. Garber mentioned, you know, an opportunity to reflect on either end of the meeting. And in our commission meetings, I find that they're not typically overrun with public comments, and I think our standard time typically is around three minutes in the commissions that I've served in. So, I don't anticipate that this is going to be burdensome for the commission moving forward.
Further discussion. Councilmember Adina.
Thank you, Mayor. I am supportive, potentially of the change to the three minutes on the agenda, which is relatively consistent in the commissions I serve on. I'm perhaps disinclined to support adding a second public comment period, not because, I mean, I've served on Energy Commission and it works well there, but if we're approving bylaws tonight based on our model bylaws and requesting a practice of a commission that we don't have at this table, is not something I'm inclined to do without them asking to do so. And so, you know, if we're sending them their bylaws, they are certainly able to recommend those changes back and to make them. And that's something I would encourage the commission to do if it works for them. But I would not necessarily be inclined to support something that's outside of our normal model bylaws without that request coming from the commission itself.
Perhaps we divide the question? So, let's deal with the first question first, if we may, with respect to nearly the time. Is the time change friendly to the body? Time change is friendly to the body. We are now just engaged in the question of the second comment period. Is that called? Councilmember Mallon.
I also would like to thank Mr. Garber for bringing this to our attention and highlighting it, as well as Councilmember Briggs. Thank you for taking the lead on this. In terms of adding a second public comment period, I, of course, have not been on various commissions for long. However, in my short time, I can say it does not add a substantial amount of time to the length of a meeting. And it is sometimes nice to have engaged members of the community call in both at the beginning and then respond to whatever occurred during the meeting at the end. So, I generally am supportive of the addition of a second public comment period.
Further discussion. Councilmember Iyer.
Yeah, I'm a little confused because I, in my experience, I have not, the boards and commissions I've sat on have not had two separate comment periods. And we don't, we purposefully removed that second comment period from this body for reasons related to length of meeting, but also, you know, feeling that it was not adding value and it was forcing people to stay longer to rehash what just happened during the meeting. So, I'm inclined to just kind of move in the direction that Councilmember Adina just indicated, that if the commission itself wants to add it, I'd be more open to it. But to me, this, it's outside of what we normally do and it's not consistent with the other commissions I sit on, nor with this body itself. So, I wouldn't support it.
Councilmember Briggs.
And perhaps, I think this suggests that we have, our bylaws differ a little bit between various commissions that we have. I do think there's a difference between our advisory commissions and the body here. This is a business meeting that we're in the work of, a lot of times, the work of council in terms of being able to debate and get more feedback happens within the course of those commissions. And so, I think that is a space where I haven't ever noticed a challenge with having public comment at the beginning and their end. That's a space where I think it's a little bit more appropriate to have additional public comment, whereas here, I think it's a little, we have noticed some challenges with it not adding necessarily additional value at the end of our meetings.
Further discussion. Councilmember Adina.
Very briefly, and I'll add, you know, I don't have any, I do not feel strongly about this. I don't have opposition to the addition of additional public comment. I think it's really more for me about kind of what our standard practice is. And so, I think, I guess I would also just add, like, if this is something that we expect of our advisory boards, if we're passing bylaws that are supposed to be standard bylaws, we should change them to standard. But rather, to impose that at the beginning of the process without the input of the commission itself seems a little out of step for me. And so, again, I have no strong feelings about this in terms of the actual content here. I agree that, I don't think it adds a lot of extra time to the meeting in a commission setting. But for me, it's simply, if this is an amendment that the commission itself wants to make, I would be fully supportive. I just think if it's outside of our standard model bylaws, then I'm not going to support it at the beginning.
Councilmember Mallon.
I would just note, the Sustainability Commission's first meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August 12th at 6:00 p.m. I think that's correct. So, per Councilmember Adina's suggestion of allowing the commission to make the decision, it's possible we could delay this decision on the second public comment period to August 12th and let the commission decide and then take it up afterwards.
Yeah, Councilmember Dish, then Ackman.
Yeah, I'm a little confused. I wonder if they need bylaws before they meet the first time? But I was going to note that in view of the fact that they don't exist yet, you know, we'd need to hear from them, and in view of the fact that the two commissions, well, I know the Environmental Commission always had before and after, and I believe the Energy Commission has before and after. So, it makes sense to carry over, if it's a commission that's merging those two, I think it makes sense to carry over that practice. But it also makes sense to let the commission affirm that it would like to carry, the new commission that doesn't exist yet, affirm that it would like to carry over the practice. So, I would welcome them asking us to approve that and would support it.
Councilwoman Ackman. Oh, for my part, delighted to vote yes on this if this is what the commission wants, but if and as our model bylaws don't provide for it, I think I'm going to, I would be disinclined to vote in favor of this, but welcome the revision if that's what the commission wants downstream. Further discussion. But your mileage may vary. Roll hobo, please, starting with Councilmember Briggs.
Councilmember Briggs.
Yes.
This on the amendment, my apologies.
Councilmember Cornell.
Yes.
Councilmember Dish.
Sorry, this is the second part of the amendment because the first part.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, no.
Councilmember Harrison.
No.
Councilmember Watson.
Yes.
Councilmember Mallon.
Yes.
Councilmember Adina.
No.
Councilmember Gacy Edwin.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
No.
Councilmember Iyer.
No.
Motion fails.
I didn't get the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Ackman? Sorry.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion. Motion passes. My apologies.
Further discussion, the main motion is amended. Well, I'm sorry, Councilmember Dish.
I think this is a delightful outcome and I'm very happy to support the amended resolution and support the right of every member of this body to vote.
It's ironic that our clerk should have been the disenfragizing agent, but you know, we digress. Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. We have no public hearings today. We have before us the regular session minutes of June 16, 2025. May I have a motion, please, to approve these minutes? Moved by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Cornell. Discussion, please, of the minutes. All in favor? All opposed? The minutes are approved. DC1, Resolution approving the recommendation of the city administrator for the timing of bond issuance for the Arbor South project. Move by. Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Watson. Discussion, please, of DC1. I will get this started off, please, warming up to amendment. As folks know, the purpose of this, the purpose of this resolution, let me put my time run, the purpose of this resolution is to provide some directionality to staff as to the timing of potential bonds associated with the Arbor South project. I, for my part, am extremely grateful for staff to the work that they have done on this matter, having worked hard to put together a public-private engagement that looks to bring over 1,000 housing units, including 250 affordable housing units, hotels, substantial commercial enterprises, to form a residential, a new residential and commercial hub in our city, hopefully spurring additional growth in this woefully underutilized area of our community. Another part of this gratitude is that I am extremely grateful that staff has substantial expertise in this area, Mr. DeHoney, Mr. Giant, and so forth, in guiding public components of these public-private partnerships. And I further am grateful for Mr. DeHoney's financial stewardship of the city during his tenure here, helping guide us to a much-sought-after AAA bond rating. In the presence of that gratitude for this experience, however, I will also observe that we, as a community, are less experienced in these matters. And as confident as I am in staff's review, I am also mindful of the novelty of this venture for us. And so, for my part, I'd like to exhibit a heightened caution and would ask for a council member to bring forward an amendment that has been sent to the clerk. Clerk, please, can please distribute that? novelty of this venture for us. And so, for my part, I'd like to exhibit a heightened caution and would ask for a council member to bring forward an amendment that has been sent to the clerk. Clerk, please, can please distribute that? seconded by Councilmember Malik. Thank you. If I can grab the floor with respect to the amendment. What the amendment does for the purposes, for the council and for the public, it would remove the first two resolved clauses and add, in its stead, whereas City Council respects staff's expertise and advice and wishes to proceed with additional caution, resolve that City Council directs the City Administrator to continue negotiations with the developer of Arbor South on the following basis: that the city issue bonds after construction of the initial public parking deck for the Arbor South project, but that the city issue bonds before construction for subsequent decks, provided that the city retain the option to issue bonds after construction based upon the then-current market conditions. Very briefly, the memo, pardon me, the resolution does ask for staff's directionality from council with respect to the timing of these bonds. The staff requests authority with respect to issuing the bonds, directionality with respect to the bonds before, before, before. It would be the effect of this resolution to instead issue the bonds after construction for the first bond, and then a default of before and before for the next two bonds with the retained city option to issue the bonds after construction if then-market conditions advise. That is the proposed amendment. I think that's a wise modulation of risk and reflects both staff's expertise and the, as councils and communities, observes the novelty of this venture and mitigates risks that we are looking to consider. And so with that, is there further discussion of the amendment? Councilmember Redina.
Yeah, thank you. Briefly, just thank you, Mayor, for bringing this forward. I think this better reflects my personal comfort with the level of risk associated with this project. Obviously, mitigating some additional risk for the city as we move forward with this is important to me. And so I'm grateful for you for bringing it and will be supporting it.
Councilmember Malik.
I, too, want to thank city staff for all the work that they've done on this project. I generally consider myself pretty risk averse, so I appreciate the many conversations recently that have helped me clarify some of the risk, as well as the financial impacts that this bonding decision could have. I appreciate the amendment, and I think it appropriately balances the risk with the financial implications for the time being. So I will be supporting it tonight.
Councilmember Dish.
Yeah, I want to thank everyone for working hard on this resolution and bringing it forward. I want to, I will support it because I honor the fact that many folks in the community and many of us on this board don't have experience with this kind of a large project. But I also want to note that we are always in the business of trade-offs. And in this one, what we are giving up a bit of, it's important to understand that by financing, by purchasing the decks after they have been built, they will be privately financed over the time of building them, which is expensive. Private financing costs less, I'm sorry, private financing costs more than municipal bonds. And so the effect will be to raise the cost to the city of purchasing the decks. It is not clear exactly how much it will raise the cost, but the estimate, one estimate is that if we purchased all of the, if we bonded for the decks, all three of them, before they were constructed, that would save $30 million in financing costs. So we are likely to lose somewhere around a third to probably less than a half, but a little more than a third of that money. And that money can go into building the infrastructure that we need to support that project. And it's important money because it's money that is not tied to users. So it's a way of extending infrastructure that we can simply have, we can simply put it there because we don't need to first get people to hook up. And we obviously, by law, cannot put that cost on the backs of current taxpayers. So this is crucial money. But risk is also real. And I think this is a good middle way that I support because it will come at a time when we have more information about the project, and I think we can all feel more comfortable and make a stronger case that this is a terrific vision and a wonderful project for Ann Arbor.
Further discussion of the amendment. Councilmember Watson.
A lot of my colleagues have covered these points, but I just wanted to reiterate that this amendment mitigates risk to the city for the first parking deck while the project is getting off the ground, but then maximizes the amount of TIF available potentially for infrastructure improvements in the last two phases of the project. So that's why this amendment strikes me as a good compromise. I will be supporting it.
Further discussion of the amendment, Councilmember Ryer.
Thank you. I can see where this is going to go, so I'm not going to fight hard on this. But I will say that I was comfortable with staff's recommendation. I feel that our city staff have really looked at what the real risk is to the city and felt that there was not enough risk that existed in order to, in order to give up what we're giving up. And so that's why they recommended that we go ahead and do it the other way for all three. I can appreciate that, you know, this is a new thing that we're doing here, and a lot of folks are risk averse. But we've had consultants look at this, we've had our city staff look at this, we've got folks on city staff who have tons of expertise doing these types of things in other cities, between Mr. DeHoney and Mr. Giant. And they were comfortable with going ahead and having them financed publicly. So in order that we could maximize the money to support our infrastructure. So I'm not really sure why we're doing this. I can appreciate that, you know, if that's what's necessary to get everyone on board, that's what we got to do. But I really wish we didn't have to do it this way, so that we could maximize those TIF dollars for our infrastructure. Thanks.
Further discussion of the amendment. All in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Amendment is approved. Further discussion, the main motion is amended. Councilmember Briggs.
Thanks. So I know we've all expressed a commitment to increasing our housing supply to address the skyrocketing housing costs in Ann Arbor. So I fully understand the initial enthusiasm around a development that proposes a promising 1,000 new units of housing. Unfortunately, the Arbor South proposal, which relies on $300 million of public funding, doesn't deliver upon community planning or transportation goals, infrastructure needs, or ultimately, and ultimately, it challenges our community affordability. So I'm going to discuss again issue around planning. So as we know, TC-1 zoning aims to facilitate mixed-use development that can be more sustainable because of the close proximity to strong transit service. However, as the RIDE shared with the city in a letter in early June, the structure of this deal is likely to decrease the quality of service in the area. Matt Carpenter, Executive Director of the RIDE, wrote and articulated the issue well. He wrote, "Rising property values create more tax revenue from voter-approved transit millages, which we use to augment services and serve a growing population. Our understanding is that the increase in tax revenue from this site will be reoriented for the 30-plus years to provide debt service on three parking garages for this private development." He goes on to share that, "Without additional funding, the RIDE's only options could be to accept poor service in this TC-1 area of South Ann Arbor, cut services from other parts of the community to serve new residents, or raise taxes area-wide." I would hope we all would agree that that's not an acceptable outcome. Secondly, I'd like to speak to community affordability. I don't want us to forget that transportation is the second highest cost in household budgets. When we invest in walkability, bikeability, and good transit service, we're making our community more affordable. And this is important for all residents, not just those in dedicated affordable housing. The RIDE has expressed an interest in partnering with the developer to address transportation needs. Instead of sinking our public dollars and agreeing to maintain and operate three parking garages in perpetuity, we should be encouraging the developer to take the ride up on their willingness to partner and to create a free or discounted bus pass program or other options. But perhaps you think a hefty public subsidy via the TIF is just what's required to get dense infill housing in this area. Perhaps we just need to subsidize the parking to get housing. But recent history suggests otherwise. In October of 2023, council approved an all-electric development at Briarwood, which provides 354 units of multifamily housing, new sidewalks partnered with AATA, on bus stops, ADA enhancements made at crossings, road reconfigurations, and it includes a four-level parking garage with 301 spaces. All this was done with no public subsidy. And the increase in tax revenue from this development will not only benefit the city but other public agencies like AAA and Anne Arbor Public Schools. So for all these reasons, regardless of the timing of the bond issuance, which I do think is better as amended, I just can't support issuing the bonds for these parking garages. So I'm not going to support the timing tonight either.
Councilmember Ryer.
Thank you. I was wondering if either Mr. Giant or someone from the project team could address some of the issues raised by the RIDE letter, which is, my understanding was based on some misunderstood numbers.
Joe Giant, Economic Development for the City. And I believe we have Marty, our CFO, on the line, and Reps from PFM, our financial consultant. Yes, the RIDE. So I came into this in March. I think shortly thereafter, we had a meeting where we talked about just the importance of making sure that this development looked at transportation safety, multimodal options, and sustainability. To the extent that we actually, you know, passed a resolution to reengage the developer and make sure that those things made their way into the plan, I think that was in April. And since then, we've, you know, met with the development team, well, very regularly, just anyways, but that particular topic has taken a lot of time to make sure that they were, you know, really thoughtfully addressed, and they absolutely made the project better. And I'm glad we did that. As part of that, we engaged the RIDE. I don't know what the relationship with the development team and the city was before then, I wasn't here. But I can tell you that after that April amendment, we worked with them very carefully to make sure that we were listening to what they, what their concerns were, and making sure that, to the extent that we could, integrate them into the project. I know that I've met with them personally, and I know that the development team has. We've amended the plans to make sure that the RIDE, the bus stops that they wanted are going to be part of the development. I think that the way that they, you know, characterize the letter, it's, you know, it's the bus advocating for, you know, multimodal transit. They should. I think that they expected that the demographics of the development would be more student-heavy than I think the development team is anticipating, which would be a different, you know, mode share. I think typically in Ann Arbor, it's 6% or 7% mode share, ride the bus. I think that they were predicting somewhere between 20% and 30% would ride the bus. That would be a wonderful place for us to get as a community, but for that to be part of this development, I think is probably a ways off into the future. So saying this is going to have the effect on the bus service that they're kind of anticipating might be more than actually pans out. But just, I mean, just, you know, bigger picture, this is a big parking lot right now. There are no bus riders here. We're going to add, you know, 1,000 units, 200 of which are affordable to that point. So it will change the way that, you know, the bus operates in the city, hopefully a lot more riders. But I think that as to, you know, the specific, you know, the content of that letter, it might be just a little bit different than kind of the conversations had been going to this point. Thanks.
Councilmember Dish.
Thank you. I want to, with all respect, mention or speak to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission approved the Ann Arbor South site plan with conditions on June 17th, and those conditions must be satisfied for the project to move forward. The conditions most relevant to this discussion included that revisions to the multimodal transportation impact analysis will be submitted and plans modified to reflect outcomes that satisfy the transportation manager. And what I understand is that the review of the analysis and conversations about it are still ongoing. The revised site plan indicated that Arbor South, this has been mentioned, is willing to participate in installing a traffic signal on State Street at the west side of the project adjacent to an existing bus stop. I think that it is pretty clear from the transportation manager's report in stream that that needs to happen and that this is an exciting development that is internally walkable and has trees and bike lanes. But if it is an island unto itself, it will not meet our aspirations for TC-1. And so it needs to be connected externally as well. The site plan that was revised and that was approved did show improved bike facilities along the north and eastern edge of the project, and those will help with connectivity to existing bike facilities in that part of town. So I just want to reiterate, that was a condition of Planning Commission's site plan approval, and that has to be achieved for this project to move forward. So it's not a lack of commitment to those aspects of our aspirations for TC-1. I wanted to add one more thing that I might understand slightly differently, but this was in a staff presentation by Planner DeLeo, who mentioned that the goal of the TC-1 district is to turn parking lots into places where people can live, work, and play. And currently, 700 people work at this site, and they park in the surface parking lots. When housing and a hotel and public open space and restaurants are constructed on those, what are now parking lots, those workers will need someplace to park, as will those residents, as will the people who, I hope, join me eating in what I'm sure will be delicious restaurants. So a typical parking ratio for a housing project of this size would be 1.3 parking spots per unit. The housing component for this project has a record-low allotment of parking per unit at 0.66 spots per unit. That is lower than the Briarwood allocation of parking. And so we're looking at a, I think, a reasonably designed project, excuse me, given what we're trying to do, which is convert an office space into a whole-
Councilmember.
Yes, thing.
Councilmember Cornell.
This is a question for staff. I don't know who. I, at our last meeting, we approved a contract to continue to study the financials of this project. And I am curious what is still ambiguous and what numbers we're waiting on, and whether or not we have a final determination of what portion of the TIF will go to the city to pay for infrastructure improvements versus completely go-to parking decks.
I can speak to it anecdotally, but I know that Marty or reps from PFM would probably be able to be more specific if somebody wanted to jump in.
Good evening. I would say that we have a preliminary report, but we were waiting for a final determination of the bonding timing before we can finalize the numbers.
So there's no way to determine without first issuing the, or authorizing the bonds, what TIF dollars will come back to the city? Is that, am I understanding that correctly? That's the question I'm asking.
No, we do have, we do have TIF estimates, but obviously, some of the TIF dollars will be reallocated to the additional costs associated with financing after the fact for the developer to carry the cost. So depending on the situation and the timing, that will, that will change the amount of dollars that are allocated back to the city.
If I could just add, the reason that the administration brought the resolution worded in the manner that it is, is to provide clarity on the flow of the dollars. So from the perspective that we presented, if we were to finance all three decks where the city is doing it upfront, the number's $30.6 million as determined by PFM. If we're going to sort of bifurcate the project, and sometimes it's before and sometimes after, that's where we can't be certain until we actually do it. that's where we can't be certain until we actually do it. So we were trying to get some direction tonight to know what we're actually drilling all the way down on, and if you take an accident, then we'll go and continue working on that.
Go to the floor.
Okay. So I believe in incentives. I think they're an important economic development tool. I strongly support more housing. And I guess my bottom line is I'm really uncomfortable without knowing the actual dollars and cents. I do understand, and Mr. Giant confirmed tonight, that the developer worked with city staff on some of the environmental and transportation requests we made in a previous vote. I very much appreciate that, and I want to thank staff and the developer for doing the work. And I agree with Councilmember Dish, there are always trade-offs. My objection here lies in not understanding how much of the TIF is going to go for parking decks versus infrastructure improvements.
Councilmember.
Yes. I'll come back.
Okay. Further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Malik.
I also had a question on this topic, if staff would indulge me. So I understand that should this project move forward tonight with tonight's vote, pending that outcome, there will be a number of decision points for council coming up on this project, including a possible purchase agreement approval, a brownfield plan approval, an intention to bond, and then an actual issuance of the bond or several bond issuances for each deck. Could staff provide some clarity on the sequence and timing of those various council decisions coming up? And which of those comes first? Are they all coming in one meeting? Do we anticipate them coming over several weeks, several months? Any insight you could provide would be great.
Sure, that's a good question and one we've talked about recently as the project team. The way that we, so yeah, you had the documents laid out pretty much exactly right. There'd be a brownfield plan. We're calling it a PPA, like a public-private agreement, which is a purchase agreement with the terms for the future phases in it. And then there would be like an inducement resolution for the bonds, which would include all three bonds, it would be the total amount. And then when we were ready to issue, there would be a final approval for each one of those bonds. As it stands right now, the brownfield plan would probably come to you all first. It requires a couple additional levels of approval that would need to happen after you all hopefully approve it. It would need to go to the county brownfield authority, the county commissioners, and then the state. So that might get out in front of the other ones. It's more or less in final form pending the decision tonight because that will affect the numbers. But we would anticipate bringing that to you all, hopefully within the next month or so. And then the PPA, the big overarching document, and then the bond inducement resolution, it would follow hopefully not too long after that. And that's a very vague way to say it, but it's hard to say because it's still being negotiated. Maybe a month after that. And then whether the inducement resolution came at the same time as that or it was a little bit further down the road, it's hard to say right now. The PPA outlines a number of conditions and contingencies that need to be met before we take the next step to do the inducement resolution. So those would need to be met, and they're, you know, project approvals, permits, things like that, title. So it's hard to give you an exact timeline. Our intent is to bring them as close together as possible, but we aren't entirely sure that that's going to happen.
Thank you.
Mayor Taylor, may I add a refinement?
Please do.
Thank you, Joe. You're exactly correct. But there's just two things that I want you to keep in mind. The Ann Arbor Housing Commission is negotiating their own agreement, so that'll be a separate agreement. I just wanted that to be clear. And their own bond issuance if they decide to go that way. So it's similar transactions, but parallel and separate. And then with the brownfield plan, there comes something called a reimbursement agreement, which lays out the order in which things will be reimbursed, like the garage bond payments or whatever we agree upon. So it's a very related document to the brownfield plan, but a separate document.
Further discussion of the main motion? Councilmember Gazzia.
So thank you, Mr. Giant, and also thank you, Mr. DeHoney, for your work on this. You know, my concerns are when we received that letter from CEO of AAA, Matthew Carpenter, in regards to just this would not provide adequate funding for them to properly increase capacity. I mean, that is deeply troubling for me. I mean, part of it is it's an accessibility issue. You know, many people with disabilities, including wheelchair users, they really depend on the bus system because they have the wheelchair lifts. It's an equity issue. I understand what you're saying, that potentially, you know, Matthew Carpenter's and the AAA's analysis overestimated ridership. It sounds like that was what you said previously, correct? I guess what I'm wondering is, you know, is there plans to then revisit those conversations with AAA? Is there, and to just hear out those concerns, is there an opportunity later in the process to potentially make sure that one of the bonds are associated with increased capacity for AAA or investment in more pedestrian-friendly infrastructure?
It's a situation where, I mean, submits a letter and we're talking about it, but I mean, in reality, we're working as a team, them being part of the team consistently through the whole project development to make sure that it's meeting all of our requirements. I mean, it's challenging when, I mean, there are a lot of important things that the project needs to address, and that is absolutely one of them. And that is one of the reasons that having that extra, or that tax increment that we're saving from financing it this way is important, because we can put it towards those types of uses, like making sure that the bus stops are built out so that if you do have a disability, you can easily get on the bus at that station. That's critical. And when we talk about like an enhanced bus stop, that needs to be a part of it. That's really important. But it's an ongoing conversation. Even just looking at TC-1 more broadly, making sure that like as this area develops, that we're thinking about every single user of that area. If we're going to make it like a downtown, it needs to have the facilities that make it feel like a downtown. And that includes making it very easy for everyone to get everywhere they want to get without having to get in a car, or if they needed, you know, have special needs, like those can be addressed too. But yes, it's ongoing conversation. And again, the thing we're looking at tonight is it is not the final agreement. It's just a direction on bonding. The final agreement, if it doesn't have those details in the agreement, I mean, that would be, you know, something we would be happy to discuss before or during that conversation.
And I also understand that according to, you know, what Councilmember Cornell's comments indicated, that we also don't know how much money would necessarily come back to the city at this point to even invest in that infrastructure. But what you're saying is conversations could take place.
We know approximately the financing costs for the two different bonding scenarios. It's just very, very, very hard to drill down to a level of specificity for when there's just a lot of assumptions that can kind of build on each other. So I mean, we know generally, it's just hard to put it, if we put like, you know, we rounded it out to the sense, it would just be like a misleading level of precision, I think would be a way to put it.
Thank you.
Councilor Dish.
Oops. Okay. I just, I wanted to ask Mr. Delacorte, thank you for all of this information. We went back and forth a little bit around how to think about these. I'm sorry, sir. You and I have talked about this before, and so I wondered if you could just put your two cents here about the brownfield, what we, this question of whether, what it means to delay gratification on a brownfield TIF arrangement.
In relation to the AAA's letter or just in general?
Correct. No, no, in relation to the letter, thank you.
Yeah. You and I did speak about this, and I think it's true of every brownfield we do, all of the taxing jurisdiction, whether it's AAA, the city's general fund. Everybody goes without that increased tax, that increment during the life of the plan, and sacrifices that to allow the project to take place. With all brownfield plans, the idea is but for that sacrifice, you don't get the project. So there wouldn't be any increase in riders, there would be no increase in housing or the ownership of the housing, the people who would be the riders. Long-term, the taxes will show up to cover those costs and those increases. But for the brownfield TIF, there is no project at all. That is the initial standard. That's what PFM does the analysis on. That's what the city looks at. That's what we've done for every single brownfield plan. And it is true of every brownfield plan that those jurisdictions go without that increment for a period of time for the overall gain of the project and the lifetime of the project, which could be hundreds of years in comparison to the 30 years you go without the TIF up to. Now, this is a bigger one. It has a bigger impact on the jurisdictions for sure, but it is consistent with all the other ones we do in that the trade-off is, is but for that increment, the project doesn't happen, and you don't see the overall gain of the project down the road. And those are the conversations we have about brownfields, and that's why we ask people like PFM and our finance department to determine, if the TIF doesn't exist, does the project come? And would AAA see those advantages to be able to add and to cover those costs? Without the project, no, and long-term, certainly not. So I think that's what you were asking. Okay. Yes.
Councilor Ackman.
So I guess just to follow up on that, and I appreciate the explanation. I also appreciate the background with respect to the transportation improvements and the, what did you call it, conditional approval? Because I was very concerned when I read the transportation report, it of course was consistent with everything I know about that area. I continue to be concerned that the balance of the city's participation in the project skews away from what we want to see for changes to mode share. You know, one of the goals in our carbon neutrality plan calls for residents to take transit for 40% of their journeys, not done through walking and biking by 2030. So to me, this is about choices where our investment go. I understand what Mr. Delacorte just explained about the analysis is but for this project would not happen, and I don't argue with that, but it's not but for any project could happen. It's just this particular project. So, you know, my concerns remain. I do appreciate the amendment that minimizes risk, but again, won't be supporting this because of the concerns about what we're investing in terms of infrastructure in this area.
Councilmember Briggs.
Yeah, I think I fundamentally disagree that this area needs the brownfield to be developed. I believe that TC-1 allows for it to be developed without brownfields. We don't have 5% transit usage in the city. It's 9%. We have some of the highest mode share for bike-walk and transit in the country, 16% walk, 11% bike, 9% transit. So we already have really strong transit, and I think the point of the Ride here is not the just enhanced crosswalks and pedestrian safety as needed. They're highlighting that, but the fact, as Mr. Delacorte mentioned, that we are increasing ridership significantly in the area, and there's not going to be a corresponding increase in funding to support that. So 1,000 new people or 1,000 new units in that area, and those corresponding people that we want to ride bus, that requires more money from the part of AATA to provide that service. AATA is telling us very clearly right now that they need more revenue to provide the good service that we want to see in our community. And so I don't, what I heard in your statement was that, you know, as we move forward in this, we can make modifications in the TIF. And I don't think that's accurate. I want to make sure, clarify that. I think what we can modify is there are additional transit stop. We're not talking about funneling millions of dollars towards the AATA in this. If I'm incorrect in that, please correct me, because that is an incredibly...
No, we're talking about like transportation infrastructure, that would be part of the project.
Okay, so the transportation infrastructure, but not funding for AATA.
It would be like an operational subsidy to the rider.
Okay, that's what I assumed, but I just wanted to make that clarification, because that's the biggest issue that AATA was raising to us, is that you're increasing ridership in this area. We're suggesting the ridership projections within the, are actually likely to be higher. Whether whoever's figures are right, increased ridership is going to require additional buses to service those, and this isn't coming with that, considering this is a transit-oriented corridor. I think that that is something that we as a body should take really seriously.
Councilor Cornell.
Yeah, so I'm taking obviously a little different bent than some of my colleagues, which I appreciate having this diversity of dialogue. I wanted to point out, we just approved a good chunk of change for a contract for consultants to continue the work on the finances of this project, just to center back my concerns. The developer of this project sent a letter to council expressing concerns about the comprehensive land use plan and the city's infrastructure capacity related to added development. And in this particular project, staff has validated that with regard to the sewer system, infrastructure can limit our capacity to accomplish housing in our community. I'm confused why that concern doesn't apply to this specific development, given the letter we received. But with Briarwood being developed too, I have concerns about the timing of our infrastructure improvements with massive amounts of housing that we want being built, and when new residents will, and that gap between, when the new residents will contribute to our tax rolls. I've heard a lot about how this project pencils for the developer, but not a lot about how it pencils for the city. It feels like the city is still accepting a lot of risk, especially if the borrowing costs are at the expense of infrastructure. And we're learning tonight that city dollars will also have to fill the infrastructure gap identified by the Ride. And that we recently learned the city won't be purchasing or owning the property the decks reside on. I appreciate the amendment. I appreciate the change in it. I think that that is a wise and prudent move, even if it costs us more. But I'm not comfortable supporting authorizing funding without knowing what portion of the TIF will go to infrastructure and understand the full financial participation by the developer in these additional costs.
Further discussion?
For my part, I am comfortable moving forward tonight. I guess I'll say this. It is, to my, I appreciate the desire for council members to know what TIF is going to be spent where, what TIF can be spent where and so forth, and that's important for us to eventually figure out, for us to know once we move forward with more particularity. That number is not knowable in this context because we have not made it clear to the administrator when the bonds are going to be issued, are the bonds going to be issued before, the bonds going to be issued after. That information is necessary for staff to make the calculation that we are asking for. And so I can appreciate that there is uncertainty there, but the uncertainty is the result of the absence of this resolution. This resolution will clarify, will meet that uncertainty, enable staff to tell us precisely, based upon the cadence of the bond issuance that we have described in this resolution, what TIF will be available for what infrastructure. Further, I guess for my part, I'd say I'm not particularly interested in letters that anyone has sent to us with respect to their advocacy on the comprehensive land use plan. That's a separate matter in my view. The fact that the infrastructure downstream with respect to the wastewater will serve, will potentially serve as a, will serve as a barrier to subsequent investment is, in my view, a fact that militates in favor of this investment, in favor of this action, particularly as Councilmember Dish pointed out. By utilizing TIF dollars for this purpose, we are taking it out of the normal ratepayer pays for, pays for new infrastructure. We are specifying a particular taxpayer, utilizing those tax dollars coming through the TIF, relieving ratepayers, i.e. all of us, of the burden of building this infrastructure for subsequent, building this infrastructure to meet the downstream capacity. In my view, it makes a good deal of sense, and I'm looking forward to its further consideration. Further discussion? I think you have a second.
I don't, but isn't it the case that existing ratepayers cannot be asked to pay for an expansion? That's correct, right? Existing ratepayers cannot be made to pay for an expansion. I was just a little confused by your wording a minute ago about the relief of the burden.
Ratepayer, this is really more of a bold question than anything else, but if I can very broadly, since ratepayers, existing ratepayers have, the capital improvement is part of the rate, but is a calibrated part of the rate. It is not sort of an accelerated part of the rate. I don't know if those words are useful to you, but that's how I think it through. Am I off-key here?
You were both basically correct. There are some... There are some, some improvements that are part of rate, but they can't be asked to pay for expansion of the whole trunk line to service other ratepayers.
So, some capital improvements, yes, capital improvements of this nature, perhaps not?
Yes.
Thank you. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Briggs. This is on the, the main motion as amended.
Councilmember Briggs?
No.
Councilmember Cornell?
No.
Councilwoman Dish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Watson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Malik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Adina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gauzy Edwin?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ayer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ackman?
No.
Motion carries.
Do we have the pleasure of a closed session today? We have before us the clerk's supportive communications petition and referrals. May I have a motion, please, to include the clerk's support? Move by, Councilmember Malik, second by Councilwoman Dish, discussion of the clerk's report. All in favor? Opposed? The clerk's report is approved. Other communications today from our city attorney? The absence of public comment overflow, may I have a motion to adjourn, please? Move by, Councilwoman Adina, second by Councilwoman Malik, discussion, all in favor?